Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman, uh, Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Seven yes, one, uh, absent motion passes.
Uh, two things under the marriage report tonight. First item of this weekend is going to be hot. The eighteenth annual Captain's Days Festival begins this Thursday, July twenty first, and that will end July twenty fourth. It's going to be a good time. There's a lot of stuff going on. It's going to be very exciting for everybody. Uh, second thing I want to post is, uh, you guys have recently, uh, taken one step back into the public is receiving notice about the smoke testing. You all know that we, we passed the, uh, contract with the professional service to start conducting smoke testing in all our sanitary and storm sewers. Uh, we've noticed that we'll be going out, like we put on our website, it's going to go on the Facebook page, it's going to go in the newspaper, um, and then when they get into specific areas, a second notice will also go on, uh, resident stores as well, if I'm not mistaken. So, um, that's one big key thing is we do the smoke testing so people aren't, they're kind of freaked out if they have to have smoke in their house. Um, then we're going to do everything we can to try to get that notice out to the people, not only citywide, but when we get that designated area, smaller areas to give notice to them. I think this begins August first and runs through September sixteenth. It's a big one where people can read it. Let's go to the smoke thermals. I think it's a, uh, white list, uh, people call the federal, so, um, I want to make you guys aware of these things going on. We'll all meet here outlets and then we'll all record. We're out of the smoke testing. Again, everybody who has Captain's Days, have your corn dogs. Um, I know France will be having a cattail. He always does every year. So, it'll be good.
It'll be good.
Yep. Uh, all right. Next item up is citizens' comments. We have citizens' comments tonight. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Council. My name is Jim Bradley, who are property owner in town. Specifically, we've developed two properties in town already. Uh, moved from Superwalk, and at that time we created a two block subdivision on the back. I occupy, still own and occupy the building in the back. We could use it as a warehouse or a, uh, a garage. Uh, I need some help. When we go to Superwalk, we also provided for the future to come with utilities in the back room, and now we have a back building in place. We didn't do that without a permit, without full engineering. This one was by Tyson Engineering, first built by the car work pursuing the hammering engineering. And then we made, I think, phased out business, we just had some of it. In other words, we had full engineering, full applications of the engineering to the ground with permits and fee. In around somewhere near two thousand nine, Mr. John Tamlin purchased the property. This would be First Street, Quiggety, Tamlin property, Valetti, School Street. Tamlin purchased the property somewhere in the area of two thousand eight, started to work it in two thousand ten. By working it, I mean, he took what was essentially untouched ground, as indeed mine was before we did it, and started slowly rebuilding it. Not traveling immediately, but by two thousand ten, it was really, it was really essentially tabled out from School Street back to ours, our property. Our property slopes down and follows the original contour of that property, and then funds the property to a storm sewer that's installed by the city. It ends up in the river. There, of course, our storm sewer is down here at School Street, otherwise there are no storm, and that's in the area. Well, as it tabletops the property, the water had to go somewhere. They've been moving yellow catfish around there this year, prior year, small red and white bobcat, which was from time to time. Essentially, they're maneuvering after tabletoping with big boulders and all kinds of fill. They started to create this stuff, this lining, which is visible, and photographed by ourselves during their, uh, they're painting it at the south of the southeast corner. And when it hits this corner, the land, uh, check piece is taller than the middle, and fully in pro pass, all except a few feet of land uncovered. Then it bounces off that, and it's now been sloped. There's actually a ditch from the Valetti corner to my corner directing the water directly to the boundary between Bradley and Tamlin. On the Tamlin side, they now have five feet fill. And the Bradley side, we're still maintaining your engineered elevations. I have photographs taken by, taken by my wife, but they not yet developed. If I stand right here in the middle of the property and put my shoulders straight up like it is, the shoulders show even touching at the top of the existing landfill. It's five feet of fill across the whole thing, and it's flat. And they're flooding. Every time we get rain, they literally bounce it off Quiggety and directed it to me because they know there's a storm sewer here. Meanwhile, I get silted, rock. The silt bounces and thrown over towards me with the flow of the water. This has been going on for, well, I got photographs here to show you, uh, since at least two thousand ten. Take a quick peek if you like from the new one to the next member of the council. You can see what we deal with if there's any kind of, we need help. Specifically, what we need is a, is a stop order. We've had meetings here with Colby's help, meaning to say he was there, Chair, Chair of the City, Mr. Tamlin would come in if you pause a bit. I would, I mean, if, if, Colby would be there, I don't think anyone else was there. We've had several meetings. Each time he said to the gentleman, Mr. Tamlin, when are you going to show us engineering? Well, I've got a drawing. Somebody in Springfield drew this. Not a fee. Well, he's not even using that. He's winging it. Well, sitting, someone's sitting in that pool. And it's not, it's not working. There's no storm structures. There's no ditches that are directed to anything other than getting across my end to get the safe sewer. He does seem to be using the ones that are on Chicago, rather than School Street. There are three of them that's out there. We need a stop order, and we need you to insist, and you follow your code, which is first file the engineering, get it approved by your city engineer, they can put massive fills shown on the ground with lats, so if anybody knows how to do, programs committee can do it, to pay his fee. That's the help. I've been shoveling that silt for five, six years.
Mr. Tamlin.
That issue was ninety years ago.
I think what we need to do is we'll have to get a, for Colby, both legal and term required, or, uh, what, what our rights are within city code, what we're allowed to do, what we're allowed to stop it, what it's, um, you know, mental issue, whether it's a civil issue. I mean, I think that's another thing, what we need to have answered, we'll have to have our legal team, our, our narrative team put together. A report, it sounds like you've met with Colby on several cases relating to this, and I think Valick and myself, and the rest of the council, I think, uh, you guys want a report, what's, what's at stake higher in the city, and, um, A Y E, continue to deal with this. I don't know why I can't have the national legal process and everything else, so we can do a lot of that action. Um, I think Bill could ever direct, um, whether it be assistance or guidance in quite a complex situation.
That'd be very helpful. The only actual person that's spoken directly about it is Colby, and he was at the one meeting where, uh, it wasn't the property's donation, but he was asked, do you have the engineering? Do you have the engineering or not? He answered, no. He had the sheet with somebody in Springfield who wasn't even using it.
And pictures of the ditch, okay, two thousand thirteen. So, is, is he still putting fill in there, or is he done putting fill in there now?
No. I, I would have thought by now he was finished because it looks tabletop to me, it looks level, and today it went back and began, we've got four again up here. He's starting to love gravel, a large, not powder, but regular gravel, yeah. And he saw it, I was, I was there.
Yeah.
I kept that around, making sure it was doing.
I think, well, great to know, Rob, it was just my experience, he even, he put all this stuff on here, but it comes down to it where he wants to build a lot of that stuff. He scraped all the way out. That's exactly what I told him in my preletter. I, I, I invited his approval on it and his plan to, a while back. I gave him a number of letters stating that, you know, you're going to do this, you're going to do that, do this, do that, and that was one of the things I said, if you bring this in here and plan on developing it, all this is going to hold on here because this is not a, a stable base to develop or build anything on it. Yet, he brought it in there, they notified the city when he brought this in here, just had it all trucked over and dumped in there, and then, yeah, laid it around, and it is, it is relatively flat. It is flat, and it wasn't, it was a lot of clay stuff there, now that the erosion has taken out, it's mostly silt. And I know there's, there's rules in place, especially with our conservation as far as, um, you know, we deal with it all the time as far as the water flows, which you can't increase water rate of flow from one, from your property to another person. But there aren't, there aren't fine rules on it. And it sounds like some of those would be improved upon too. I just need to know whether, to what extent, or to what the address is, and who, and how it's taken care of, you know what I'm saying?
Chris, were you thinking about the lead? Is the good husband role, which is primary role of natural drainage, maintain natural drainage. No more, no more glossing than that, with more, more volume added, or no damage effect in doing the project. But this isn't natural drainage, drainage is at least five feet of silt. It's more natural drainage.
And that's, I think that's what we need, and why I would put the onus on the committee to report, and also work with Colby to find out. You know, and now I can tell you everyone here is concerned about the issue, but I think we want to make sure that we're addressing it, not only for us, but for you as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. But, Colby, do we have permission to do it?
No, we do not.
You kept bringing in all this dirt and pour, and what, because I mean, when you go by, you look, okay, it looks like it's way up here, some silt.
Right. We never had the courage to bring that stuff in.
Why, we didn't stop.
He brought it in there at a time, I would say, whenever he brought it in there, it was all, time we remember, notified or whatever. I think what we'll do, I think we need to give legal and the area the opportunity to get together, involve this company, to do this report together, hopefully at the next, uh, lawsuit meeting, we can have a report, so we can at least get this into the committee level, and then when, when it's time appropriate, we ask the committee back into the council.
Thank you for your advice, Bradley. What, what did you first notify the city of this issue? Uh, it'd be two thousand fourteen. I would send a letter to Mr. Tamlin complaining about it, and car parking into Colby, and we can want it since the mayor wrote the city a report. That was probably the two fifty, maybe then the two sixty, two sixteen, month. Does this typically take this long to, to rectify this problem, this gentleman? Just two thousand fourteen, I?
Well, I think what we need to do is, um, Colby, we need, we need to see where, where the line of legality lies.
I, I understand that, I just want to know why it's even since two thousand fourteen.
Instead of natural, that's, I need these guys to provide you that report, that, that report on the, of what, what was opposed, of what was never taken back, and how it's being transpired. You've got the opportunity to put that, you know.
And our public post crew has been out there looking at storm sewer structures and has been working on this, has been, have been communicating with Bradley and with Mr. Tamlin throughout the last two years, um, and asking for information from Mr. Tamlin, you know, as property owner of Bradley. His complaints were recognized, and we were trying to rectify them. And I will say this, we've come up to a point where Mr. Tamlin, he takes a bit on his own, so that, that they relax.
He has no permit? He's, he's come forward or nothing?
And there's a, there's a fine line in regards to whether a permit needed and triggered in regards to what he did, because if he permitted, that means he has rights to do what he's doing. We don't, we can't permit something because we don't know what he's planning to do with the property. He, he brings in things and told him he's going to have to either remove it, or he's got to at least stop the drainage on Mr. Bradley's property.
And I think that's very wide. I mean, it's not like we're making an order for Mr. Bradley, and obviously, there's others that, that attempts to rectify the situation from the staff level without legal action. I think we're entering at one, Mr. Bradley's in there. So, but I think, we all know you guys have the opportunity to put all that together, uh, to convey to us what, what steps you've taken over the course of time, and not only meaningful to Mr. Bradley, but to the other, the other party. He's not here, so he can't, you know, talk to us.
We won't wait to lawsuit. We think they have legal right to, uh, cease and desist order on the property, once job reviews everything in the next couple of days, and, and, uh, we won't wait to lawsuit, we'll do our job, and, and, and.
That could be hard to hear, you know.
That'd be appreciated. No matter what the, what the decision is, that would be appreciated, if we can stop at least one hour.
I just want to make sure that these guys do that to everything.
I have the record to show that every time I communicated with the, with the city, I sent a copy to Mr. Tamlin, so he's not, not unaware that I'm coming here, he's not unaware that we're coming about. There's a record, he had a copy, it was probably a safe location. Thank you for your, your time.
All right. Any other citizens' comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, two o'clock this afternoon, Captain Robert Melton of Kansas City, Kansas, this bar was shot and killed in my duty. That makes eighteen police officers in the first nineteen days of July. So, you keep my standard prayers. I know I have officers who told me their wives are criminally leaving for the work, their kids are upset, so we just keep officers in the country, any thoughts or prayers, officers to be honest as well, if you have.
All right. Signing his own permission, uh, the next scheduled meeting is Thursday, August fourth, two thousand sixteen, at five thirty p.m. Any reports, film, grab, park health and safety, uh, I'll do that night.
I move to approve, to waive the competitive bidding and approve the two thousand sixteen renovation work at City Ball to be performed by R W S Incorporated as presented and recommended by Healy Bender and Associates Incorporated.
Motion by Alderman Van Dyne, we have a second. Second, well, very common. Any discussion?
I think there might have been a couple of questions at committee in regards to, uh, one, uh, the manning wage, Scotty Anning is here, so he's got, he's got a responsibility, potential to, uh, better, I don't know what's on, forty three votes.
Yeah, for the manning wage, for our union shop, take the revenue rate.
And also one, was it, uh, the panic cap, the cesspool?
Right. And we, we got the additional cost for that, and, uh, which rate is pulled from sixty-four thousand seven sixty-eight to sixty-three one thirty.
How about, there are a lot of push?
There'll be a button, right, there'll be a button on the outside, button on the inside, it'll be tied to the panic device, you'll have to have the electronic control of that. So, when the panic is locked, and you hit the button, you still have to be able to out of the building, which obviously don't want to be in, but you want to press the button. So, it's more than just the actual operator, the panic device is different, again, has a power button, or something, so, but the labor and so on, the other net reason.
Further discussion?
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
No.
Alderman, uh, Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne, I'm sorry, Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman's Tudor.
Yes.
We have, uh, six yes, one no, one absent motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve, to waive the first and second readings and approve ordinance number sixteen dash zero seven dash one nine dash zero one, an ordinance directing the sales of former city of Wilmington police station at one twenty North Main Street, bearing parcel number zero three dash one seven dash two five dash three two three dash zero one three dash zero 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 zero.
So, motion by Alderman Van Dyne, we have a second. Second, second, well, any discussion?
Sorry, I was, I was at the meeting, I was getting back.
This is, uh, basically allowing us to bid the pri, uh, bid the property for sale, and then the actual bids come in, and you can open up at the, uh, appropriate time. So, we don't have to meet the appraisal threshold, so we can accept bids on the property, and then ultimately, you still have the decision to accept those bids, to sell the property or not. For us to do this, we, under statute, we have to, um, ask this.
That's what, if I'm not mistaken, we do the same type of process with the property manufacturer, the old city garage. Now, we did, we go to auction first time?
Yeah, we'll see.
Go public first. I believe we did go to auction first time.
Oh, we did.
Before Officer, right, and then, uh, what had happened is that then it just really, we didn't get any bids in the first while, and so, um, what happened after that, what transferred to that was the eight percent requirement after the auction. I think that's how this was kind of followed.
We tried it in, in the, bids. So, we did put another, we discussed.
I think, you know, um, yeah.
It tests, it actually tests the market for it.
Right. It's a lot of, like, to see what's up. Or maybe, because, you know, it's, it's an opportunity to put property back in the back.
And, and, but that's the job of the, you know, more active, motivated sellers, come on in, buyers, we're going to take you, at a, at a price.
Any further discussion?
Is there a reserve that, did you guys? This is not an auction, this is a bid. You guys still have a determination to accept the high bid, or you reject it all.
Okay. All right. Yep. All right. You, uh, you don't even have to accept the highest bid, I mean, that's, if they're, uh, do something else that we've done for the city, you can accept lower bid and the highest bid, but you can only approve a sale within three quarters of vote, a vote by majority vote, you can reject all of it.
I think it's, uh, good to see that, 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 uh, you can. Can John Howard, you can hear real estate, we'll be on it.
Uh, Rocka Bo, please.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman's Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent motion passes.
Thank you.
Next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, August tenth, two thousand sixteen, at five thirty p.m.
Water sewer streets and alleys, uh, Alderman's Tudor, Alderman Kerwin.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution of a two thousand sixteen, half zero eight, ADA sidewalk transition plan.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second, well, Alderman's Tudor, any discussion? Colonel, Colby, what kind of language?
Basically, uh, what we're trying to do, guys, is, is divide the city into five different zones and, uh, enforce the ADA compliance up on the sidewalk in each one. Each, each zone will have a two-year span to get all the sidewalks in those areas up to ADA compliance, um, so that we have our sidewalks to state requirement and, you know, city laws as far as ADA accessibility and movement.
Ours, by the way, looks nice.
It's just, yeah, wheelchair, just those other devices that, we're, disabled views, what with ramps, and so.
Yeah.
Are we, uh, the city's responsible to, to make the compliance? Is that what you're drawn up, you're planning for us to take care of?
Yes. With me, uh, federal, federal grants and kind of federal transportation dollars, which one of the grants that we are, that we are under right now is, is corporate bridge. There is a checkbox that we are moving forward ADA, under the ADA Act, compliance for all our public, uh, streets and sidewalks. So, it's not a formal mandate, you have to do it today, like, if you don't show that you've got a land action, they could delay, um, awarding us the, 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 until we get a land action. So, we follow this out a lot, we get, get Kiya Street, get Pinky Street, and that's where, remember, we did, we did do one modification if the Pinky Street came in because the ADA compliant officer came out and said, you guys need to change that. So, this is just great, great planning and, plus for budget purposes, if you start air market, um, or a handicap, it's able to, to travel.
Not, not as specified by time, like, we've done over?
Right now, it's planned, right.
We have to show a plan, and, and it doesn't mean we're going to do all of zone one and then all of zone two, make a fan ground, kind of find out the situations, the need arises, what funding is, or what's going on in particular in that area, so.
And we, we want to move toward compliance, and that's just for our air sections, we want to move toward compliance with vacant flats, they're only in sidewalks.
That was my next question. The rest was included. Yeah. That's what, that's what we're going to start with, we're going to push them, property office. All right. Any further discussion? Rocka Bo, please.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman's Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is one, August tenth, two thousand sixteen.
All right. Please, Alderman Tudor, Alderman Tudor.
Mr. Mayor, before I read the meeting date, I'd like to first, uh, thank Chief Arnold for your continued service, and please pass along our, uh, our, thanks to the, our current officers, and, uh, I would like to observe a moment of silence for, uh, all the fallen officers that, uh, who are involved, if that would be appropriate. Thank you, everyone. Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand sixteen, at five thirty p.m.
Fightants Administration and Land Acquisition, Alderman Tudor, Alderman Tudor.
I move to approve the accounts' payment report in amount three hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty cents on June two thousand sixteen collector's report in the amount three hundred sixty-four thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars eighty-five cents as presented by the city accountant.
By Alderman Tudor, we have, Tudor, we have a second. Second, Alderman Kirby Hall, any discussion? Rocka Bo, please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman's Tudor. Seven yes, one absent motion passes.
I move to approve, to waive the first and second readings and approve ordinance number sixteen dash zero seven dash nineteen dash zero two, an ordinance repealing certain provisions of the city of Wilmington, common ordinances.
Motion by Alderman, we have a second.
With, with the change of the one, two, three, fourth paragraph to read, whereas, and take out ordinance and license, and put in finance committee, yes, review, have been approved. With that correction.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. We have a second. Second by Alderman, any further discussion? All right. Rocka Bo, please.
Alderman Tudor, yes. Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman's Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
No.
Alderman Larry Hall.
No.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
We have five yes, two, um, two nay, and one absent motion passes.
I move to approve a lease agreement between the city and Wilmington area's historical society.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Van Dyne. Any discussion? Rocka Bo, please.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman, uh, Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman's Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent motion passes.
And, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve PGA RE Planner's Addendum to Professional Services Agreement for Bridgeport Judiciary Center and Mobile Terminal Facility Area.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Kirby, any discussion? Rocka Bo, please.
Alderman's Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall. Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor, yes.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the entry and small shed occupation license agreement with Sandra Welch.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, I have a second. Second, Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Rocka vote please.
Alderman's Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, move to approve the hire of John Sandra Kula. I hope I didn't butcher that. Yes.
You're all right, I can be talking.
Zero crew two at the water reclamation facility.
All right, motion by Alderman Tudor, I have a second. Second, Alderman Tudor. For those who don't know, John sits out there in the audience, and Darren, you did go through all the.
Are there two words?
Yeah.
Yeah. Be nice.
I will.
John, he's a Illinois licensed plumber, he's also a licensed backflow and cross connection guy. He has experience working with laying up mains, part of water ends, so he's done that actually for his last job. He's familiar with our pumps, when we was doing our walkthrough, I was going to show him an allen tank, this is one of the things that kind of caught my, my eyes and ears, was showing him allen tank, and immediately he knew the Metropolitan pumps and the white pump, knew the difference, and I looked him up, and he also said that, that, he didn't like the Metropolitan pumps. And Peter was that and I, so we're like, this might be our guy, so, so, but, and Kobe and him also tested, and he has a dealer somewhere, and that was something that really showed to us that, that he's not satisfied or is, he must have learned, and so, so, again, you know, we got him slated for August 1st, and, you know, we've had to look, and I think it's been really good addition, especially, not only in my department, but the city, we will probably use him quite a bit with, with having, you know, having a farmer's license or, I think, we'll be using him, so, again. John, where do you live?
I live in Bradbrook. I live in Kansas.
Just curious. Another comment, we turned a certain different approach on how to do the interviewing and announcing, a lot of the suggestions was from Darren, and we actually brought in candidates to do what we call walk around, with him and Pat, and he had the candidates sort of informal, wasn't the narrow down from the, from the application. I think you end up walking around for, for, and then you broke it down, and then Kobe and Kim helped with final interviews. And one day, when I got to meet him, he commented about how organized and how great our meetings run from watching us on YouTube, which is, you know, we always say, has anybody ever watched us? Well, here's a classic example, there's a candidate that's watching us, or work for us.
That was called bribery.
Oh, good, I just won't, won't just, but it's okay.
Whatever you call it.
Whatever you call it, but, and actually candidates do not, they choose us as much as we choose them, and I think it's going to be a great addition from here and on, and I want to give them all, staff, the time that they spend on this, in regards to, and with his experience, we will take advantage of that license buffer, because he knows he's got to be cross trained, he had worked in all the departments, in public boards and water, too. All right, something else.
Any further discussion? Rocka vote please.
Alderman's Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Lord, welcome.
All right, Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, August 16th, 2016, at 6:00 p.m.
Ordinance of License Committee, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Evans.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to approve, to waive the first and second readings and approve ordinance number 16-07-18-03. An ordinance establishing membership on a planning is on that issue.
Motion by Alderman, I have a second. Second, Alderman, any discussion?
What does this, what does this mean?
This just brings our numbers down from eight to seven.
The committee went through this and recommended it.
What it kind of does is, it never really had to happen, but it always brings the possibility that we could end up in a pot, so we felt we'd go with the odd number, and planning goes first to prevent that.
This gives the opportunity with a lot of the, the transition changes.
They don't have the airbrushed side breakers, so.
Chairman votes.
They would be good.
Right.
He was, he was.
Any further discussion? Rocka vote please.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman's Tudor. Seven yes, one absent, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, August 9th, 2016, at 6:00 p.m.
We're not collecting where you're going, where you are.
We will have executive session tonight.
Yes. Yes.
City administration report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Management report, you can see in the high-speed rail, there's really been no updates on those four projects as of this time. Going to the route fifty two projects, spoke with ESI yesterday, and they are awaiting , I have approval to put this project out for bid. There's a good chance it may be out this Friday, if not, it will be the next Friday, or the Thursday, I'm sorry, either this Thursday or next Thursday, when it's going to be out for bid, and we're looking to.
Arsenal Road.
Yeah. Looking to open at August 9th, so it should be able to be, in front of you guys, on the second meeting in August, to move that project forward, so they would probably be close to starting work right at the Labor Day, and should have all the roadwork done prior to wear time, so, being the spring, and the traffic signals and the restoration, so, it's likely moving at the pace we are, most of the roadwork should be done prior to snow flying. The Piaton Road project itself, we're probably going to, you know, probably two or three week delay on that one behind this one, we are pushing to try and keep these projects away next to each other, so, because if this thing out of bid, you know, have a bid with this thing a couple of weeks behind, and possibly doing the same thing for this project. It's not as much concrete work and whatnot on this project as there is up there, so there's a good chance that most of the roadwork will be done at this intersection as well. Catchy town, same thing with the traffic signal restoration there.
So, pretty much, I mean, on the Piaton Road, all the signatures that have been signed up, it's going to be, I have to.
It's part of the plans, yes.
Backpack development report, building CDC, no real updates there, they're still doing the interior floor, and, and the parking lots, the Tory, basically the same thing out there, the three sides up, and still digging ambition up to the patch times, they are looking to do their traction more under the rental road the next day or so, for the detention for that project. Excellent C, Cell 1A, you see, even out there, the wall panels are being placed for that project, too, so.
It's one on the north side, correct?
Yes, north of it exists the vision of right here. Put the panels up for that, that building, the buck easement, the surveyors are looking to get out there, we're trying to get some work out with OX, possibly start this Thursday as well, to start the survey work, to determine the layout of this site, capacity analysis for the storm sewer, and everything, reach an agreement with the OX to determine how much easement and whatnot we need from them to construct this project.
Yeah, I mean, they signed the letter of intent, move forward, and Millian Partners is on board with the payments for any work that's going to be done there, so, we assign the contract with the associates, it was from them, we need this information to go to the actual legal document for the easement, so we know legally survey, probably survey the area at the end. And once we get that, then John will draft that corporate document for the easement, and it will turn around, sign in, and then, everything can go right. We do have some permitting issues that we have to work with because of the outfall going into the year, even though it's daylight on the property, probably take about, probably four months for those permits to get approved, so we're looking at construction probably for this sometime in February. Maybe a little sooner, but I think by January, you know, we'll construct in January, so, always good to do underpound work, though, if the weather's great for the frost coming out, it'd be great to get up those pipes and ground, you know, in late February, if we're going to be able to, you know, we help the project frost.
And lastly, Foxdale Commons, they're working back and forth with Mr. Fisher to get the contract, they have a deconstruction to make sure that the road improvements are finished up out there at Foxdale, so, we're looking at it right, right month or so.
We'll be second exit coming out on Kiki.
Was that, was that tied into, I can't see it, we see what you're doing.
Yes, it was, we need to have the contract, from deconstruction completed, and tight line, so, we did issue, they closed Friday on one, so, we wouldn't, we wouldn't give the, I can see to it all that, all that time.
Thank you. City administration report, Mr. Grab.
No report.
Tony, what about, what's the latest on what you've had? Is there anything?
Nothing. I haven't heard anything. I do know that there was some content made about three weeks ago, but nothing, I haven't heard anything back, the buyer was, it's a bad communication, potential buyer, or the artist.
How about the VFW, anything out of them people you haven't?
No, I did notice a lot of trucks over there yesterday, um, afternoon, so, a lot of people walking around, I know they were waiting for the insurance people to work out their issues.
When I spoke with the manager, Memorial Day, that was their biggest issue, was I guess the insurance company wasn't releasing payment for various reasons, don't know why, so, but that's their way to, to insurance, so.
Hopefully they can come down.
Yep. Attorney's report.
Mr.?
Thank you. No report tonight.
You want to go into executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I make, I move to go into executive session at 7:49 for the following matters of personnel.
All right, motion by Alderman Thury Hollis, second. Second, Alderman Evans, Rocka vote please.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman's Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
And Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, passes.
Just need Mr. Kirby, tell me we don't need you.